Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this session of Quispam Sis Town Council on April 2nd, 2024. May I have an approval of the agenda, please? Moved by Deputy Mayor Schreier, seconded by Counselor Olson. On the question, seeing there are none, please vote now. Do you want her to shut down?
If she could refresh her reboot.
Motion carried seven zero, you might want to refresh. Okay. And treaty acknowledgement, Counselor Thompson, please.
We acknowledge that Quispam Sis exists on the traditional territory of the Wallisdequay, Malacite, and Micmac people, whose ancestors, along with the Pasmaquoddy tribes, signed peace and friendship treaties with the British Crown in the 1700s. We would like to take this moment to pay respect to the elders, past and present, and the descendants of this traditional territory. And may we remind ourselves of the important work we have before us tonight, and may we make good decisions without prejudice or bias, and always in the best interest of our community, which we are here to serve.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson. A few remarks this evening. First of all, thank you for being with us on the heels of the Easter long weekend. I hope everyone was able to make wonderful memories with family and friends at this special time. And also, congratulations to everyone involved in Saturday's Police versus Fire game, hockey game, in support of the Mattie Murphy Memorial Fund. The Mattie Murphy Memorial Fund Foundation was established in 2019 after she lost her courageous battle with mental illness at just 21 years of age. On Saturday, the Kennebukase's Regional Police Force defeated the Kennebukase's Valley Fire Department 6 to 2 at the Quplex while raising $3,500 to support mental health awareness and education in our community and others in our region. Thank you so much to our police and firefighters who work so hard to help keep us safe every day, for helping to end the stigma surrounding mental health. I received a letter from a young gentleman back in February, and I'm going to read that to you and see what you think of it. So the young man's name was Willem, and he had a question for our council. He said, "Dear Town of Quispam Sis Council, my name is Willem. I'm 10 years old, and this is why we need a groundhog. With the cost of a groundhog that is basically free advertising, Nova Scotia has Shumanakity Sam, so why can't we? It is basically the same weather. If he could live at the Quplex, and its name could be Quispam Sis Pam. In conclusion, that is why we should have a groundhog. Please respond." So that is from Willem. So I think we better get our heads together at some point and respond to Willem's letter. So thank you, Willem. And I'd also like to take this time to remind you that you can still nominate a volunteer in your life for the 2024 Quispam Sis Volunteer Recognition Award. Volunteers make such an important contribution to everyday life here in Quispam Sis, often away from the limelight or behind the scenes. You can find the nomination form on our website at quispamsis.ca. But don't delay. The deadline for nominations is tomorrow, Wednesday, April 3rd. Award winners will be recognized at our next meeting of Town Council on April 16th. Thank you to all the wonderful volunteers who really helped to make our community shine. We are developing a plan to expand the Hammond River Park, and we want your input. We are holding a public consultation on Thursday, April 4th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. at the Menin's Cove Beach House. You can also offer your thoughts through an online survey. More information on this project is available on our website, quispamsis.ca. Today is World Autism Awareness Day. Moving from awareness to acceptance is about embracing the diversity of individuals on the autism spectrum, recognizing their unique strengths, and promoting inclusivity. According to Autism Canada, 1 in 50 Canadians is on the autism spectrum. If you haven't already, please take some time to learn more about autism and how you can support members of your community who are on the autism spectrum. Also, National Dental Hygienist Week is celebrated annually between April 4th and the 10th, highlighting the importance of maintaining good oral health practices while helping Canadians to understand the vital role those dental hygienists play in the healthcare system. This year's theme, Oral Health for Total Health, reminds us that taking care of our mouth, teeth, and gums positively impacts other aspects of our lives. The Town of Quispam Sis is lighting up the town hall in purple in support of National Dental Hygienist Week. And a very special concert is coming up later this month in support of the KV Food Bank. The Come Together Beatles Tribute Concert is set for Friday, April 26, at 7:30 at the Imperial Theatre in St. John. The two-hour show will be led by talented local musicians, putting their own sounds behind the timeless classics of the Beatles. Money raised will help the KV Food Basket purchase healthy food options for their clients. Visit our Facebook page for more information. And that is what's happening around Quispam Sis. I'm looking now at item number four, a disclosure of interests. There are none, we will go on to item number five, presentations. And there are none. Item number six, public hearings. Palmer Brook Road, Parcel A, Andrew Harrigan and Brad Lockard. 669155 New Brunswick Inc., rezoning application rural to light industrial. I think EMO has it, did you? Yes, oh, there you are. All right. So this evening, we have Andrew Harrigan and Mr. Lockard, Brad Lockard. And with our public hearing, you may do a presentation of your request. Okay. And I will ask if there is anyone to speak for or against the application? Is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against the application? And before I read the final time, can we see if there's anyone online who wishes to speak for or against the application? And there is no one online, thank you. Council now may consider first and second reading of the of the proposed zoning bylaw, or you may ask questions first if you have any questions for Mr. Lockard or Mr. Harrigan. Counselor Thompson. Your light was on, Beth, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm waiting for it to, okay. I would move first reading be given to the proposed municipal plan bylaw number 054-08.
Thank you, it's been moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Donovan. On the question, there are none, please vote now. She's in favor. Motion carried seven zero. And for second reading, Counselor Olson.
Yes, I'd move second reading. Second reading be given to proposed municipal plan bylaw amendment number 054-08. And as recommended by PAC, a revised site plan be submitted to the town prior to third and final reading, identifying the 15-meter-wide buffer that is to be maintained along the entire rear of the property.
Thank you, it's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Miller. On the question, there are none, please vote now. She's okay, yep. Motion carried seven zero, thank you, thank you, gentlemen. There are two more motions, we will go through those. Counselor Bigger.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I propose first reading be given to proposed zoning bylaw amendment number 038-48.
It's been moved by Counselor Bigger, seconded by Counselor Donovan. On the question, please vote now. That's good. Motion carried seven zero, Counselor Luck.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to make the motion that second reading be given to proposed zoning bylaw amendment number 038-48. And as recommended by PAC, a revised site plan be submitted to the town prior to the third and final reading, identifying the 15-meter-wide buffer that is to be maintained along the entire rear of the property.
It's been moved by Counselor Luck, seconded by Counselor Olson. On the question, please vote now. Beth is good. Motion carried seven zero, thank you. Item number seven, previous meeting minutes, please. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
So moved?
Move that regular meeting minutes be accepted, seconded by Counselor Donovan. On the question, please vote now. Counselor Thompson? Yes, she's good. Motion carried seven zero, thank you. Item number eight, unfinished business. Item number nine, correspondence, pre-filled sandbag purchase in event of emergency flooding. Counselor Miller.
Thank you, your worship. Just like all the other years, I'd move the council authorize the acting CEO to purchase 12,000 pre-filled sandbags from Brookville Manufacturing for the price of $57,000, exclusive of HST, only if the event of an emergency flooding situation occurs in Quispam Sis.
It's been moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Bigger. On the question, Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Thank you, your worship. I had this question last year or two, I believe. I know it's a set height. I'm sure that's EMO that sets that height. But just to be conscious that not everybody would be 15 feet above before their houses would start to flood. So, you know, the road, we all know what the Gondola Point Road looks like, the oops and dips, and so some people are down lower, some people up higher. So I always find that really strange to, I know it's for convenience sake to be the same as EMO and say, okay, if they say that's what the flood is, that's what it is. But is, in reality, is that what would happen to our beach house? Would our beach house be 15 feet above flood? I don't know. So I always sort of question that figure. But I'm grateful for the motion and that it will happen, but just be conscious of, I'm always conscious of the fact that there could be people that find themselves in a different situation.
And to your point, I think historically, people are very much aware of the hazards that there could be to their own property and are mindful of that, so thank you for that point. Counselor Olson.
No, I'm okay.
Okay. On the question, please vote now. She's good. Motion carried seven zero, thank you. Onto item number 10, bylaws. 10A, proposed procedural bylaw number 064. Motion to resolve into COW, Committee of the Whole, for less formal discussion of council. So do we have a motion to resolve into Committee of the Whole? Counselor Thompson.
Yes, I move that we resolve into Committee of the Whole to allow for less formal discussion on the proposed procedural bylaw number 064.
It's been moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Bigger. On the question, Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, your worship. Okay, so this resolution to move the discussion of this into Committee of the Whole, that's what we're talking about here, right? It's kind of funny because the way we define Committee of the Whole is part of the bylaw discussion that we need to have. So I want to clarify, from my understanding, we're talking about essentially the equivalent of like an in-camera discussion about this?
No, this is an open discussion, but it is less formal than our regular meetings, and it is not in-camera. So this is just a discussion where
Right.
Counselor Mike, Counselor Kirk, and we can have a very open, relaxed discussion on this, as robust as you wish.
Immediately, like right here?
Right here, right now. We just went into Committee of the Whole.
Okay, so the distinction being less formal insofar as we don't require a seconder, for example. And what other distinctions can you tell me about what makes it less formal? I don't quite understand, I just don't understand why we're drawing a distinction.
I'm going to defer to the clerk because she is the expert, and I'm going by memory of what we learned in our
Right, and let me just say, I'm fully in favor of making this as, like sort of as swift and malleable and so on, a discussion as possible. I just want to understand the formality of making a resolution about it if I don't quite understand what the point of that is. So what doesn't get done if we don't do this thing right here?
So on the question, Madam Clerk.
Through you, your worship, as noted, as you said, by the parliamentarian at the last meeting, and in our procedural bylaw, anytime a council feels that a matter could be more conveniently discussed in Committee of the Whole, they may do so, resolve into Committee of the Whole. And it just allows for a less formal discussion. You don't have to have, you know, put a motion forth and be speaking to whatever the motion is. You can have an actual review and discussion. And it is open. The only reason it would go to closed is if it were pursuant to any of those sections in the Local Governance Act that would meet the closed council meeting requirement. Thank you, your worship.
Madam Clerk, is there a time limit on how long a councilor can speak to the, because I know there are time limits under other circumstances?
The procedural bylaw does state that all rules are pretty much to be respected. That would be in a regular meeting in Committee of the Whole. So our current bylaw does allow for a 15-minute timeline for counselors to speak.
Thank you. Counselor Bigger, follow-up.
Yes, thank you, okay. So I thank you very much for that understanding, and I'm fully in favor of that. I think that the rub for us technologically is that we have a system here currently, set up electronically, that requires a pause between one person speaking and another. And I look forward to seeing how we manage the challenge of a less formal discussion when we're sitting in a very formal setting, as opposed to, I would suggest, sitting around the boardroom table without the requirement of it being captured to camera, to the internet, and for public record, and so on and so forth. So I'm fully in favor of it, I just don't know that we're, I just, I don't know that you can get there from here, I guess, like the old farmer would say, you know?
And on that, I guess, in my role, what I would ensure is that there's only one person speaking at a time, the same that we would, that would be the respect that we will show one another, is to have one person speaking. But if you want to speak three times, four times, or five times, you are welcome to do that.
It's not really the distinction I'm trying to draw, though. What I'm referring to is more the casual cadence of a conversation back and forth, as opposed to sort of a pause, waiting for a formal kind of recognition of who speaks next and so on. And that's, I don't, nobody wants anything to descend into a childlike, a childish shouting match or anything like that, but anyhow, I'll just withhold my judgment on it, and hopefully we can, hopefully it's effective. I hope it is.
Madam Clerk.
Just one small comment, your worship, through you. Many times, our special all-day budget meetings have been moved into Committee of the Whole, just to allow for that less formal, so it would be the same as that.
Thank you. On the question, so it was moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Olson? Counselor Bigger. On the question, please vote now. Motion carried seven zero. So we have the proposed procedural bylaw number 064, version three. And there's a copy on your desk that looks like this. Now, I don't know how we would like to proceed with this, if we want to just go through and stop where somebody might have a question, or is there a way that we should proceed?
Again, through you, your worship, but from the discussions that have been on this proposed bylaw, it seems to me anyways, the three main items I have outlined in a staff report, one was the electronic meetings, the number of virtual meetings that members can attend annually. The proposed bylaw is the same as what is in our current bylaw, five meetings per year. But that is up to council to decide if they feel that would be sufficient. The election of the deputy mayor that had come up, if council wanted to look at having a rotating, on a rotating basis, the deputy mayor position. The proposed bylaw currently, as has been tradition here in Quispam Sis, is based on the counselor who receives the highest number of votes, and it has always been, not saying it always has to continue to be, but it has always been that that counselor then holds that position for the remainder of his or her term. If council did change that, I would think it would become effective with the first meeting of the next council, because that is where it is actually defined in the bylaw, under the first meeting section. And the third item was the limit of debate. Currently, the procedural bylaw allows for a 15-minute. The proposed bylaw had reduced that to 10 minutes, and Ms. McFarland had recommended it be further reduced to three to five minutes. So there is maybe some discussion and decision of council on that item. The other items are mainly housekeeping items. This bylaw is 20 years old. It still refers to the Municipalities Act. The Local Governance Act has been in place now for a few years. We've changed our meeting start time. Instead of seven, it's now six. Our curfew's at 10 instead of 11. There's, you know, relevant definitions, housekeeping items. But those were the three main items that council may wish to start their discussion.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we'll start with number one, the electronic meetings, the number of virtual meetings that council members can attend annually, and this applies to regular meetings. So the proposed draft allows up to five meetings per year, with an exception in the case of illness and/or disability, or with the authorization of council. Provincial legislation no longer provides restrictions on the number of meetings a member can attend electronically. However, the spirit of the legislation is that council meetings normally implied to be held in-person. So this will be a decision of council is required here. So if we could start the discussion on that, please. Counselor Bigger.
Thank you, your worship. I'm generally in favor of this draft change of, I guess, or ratifying the number of five. It seems to be, if the province is kind of removing the stipulation around this, everybody seems to be pretty familiar with the way this all goes now. There are myriad sundry reasons, very reasonable, you know, circumstances under which somebody can avail themselves virtually to still play an integral part in the meeting, so I'm in favor of it.
Deputy Mayor Schreier, please.
Thank you, your worship. I'm in favor of a change, obviously, and I think one of the meetings previous that we had, I'd thrown out the number of six. And then I think one number was thrown out unlimited. I don't think that went over too well. But I think, you know, with people working, flight delays, things that can happen, I like the number six.
Thank you. As an elected representative, I like to think that I am here to represent the residents of Quispam Sis, and that my place is here. I do agree, I feel that five is plenty, which is about one-fifth of the regular council meetings. So anyone else have any comments on that or a motion? Counselor Thompson.
Yes, your worship, I do have. I'm in favor of this, too. You know, the bylaw clearly states that, you know, with, in the case of illness or disability, or with the authorization of council. So it can be more than that at any given time, so, you know, five is a good number.
Where we're in Committee of the Whole, that is another distinction. No decisions can be made, but you can come to your consensus, and then at the end, when we go back and open, the motion to direct any of these changes will be made. So a consensus.
So is there a consensus on having five virtual meetings? Counselor Bigger? Councillor Bigger? Yes, councillor Luck? Yes? Councillor Olson? Consensus is met. Item number two is the election of deputy mayor. Province by regulation now requires that councils include in their procedural bylaw the process they use to elect their deputy mayor. The process is, drafts states, the selection is based on the councillor who receives the highest number of votes during an election, which has been the traditional criteria used for the election of the deputy mayor in Quis Pam Sis. It was suggested at the February sixth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting, that the position of deputy mayor be on a rotating basis. Decision of council is required, and if on a rotating basis, this would begin at the first meeting of the next council, and would need to include the rotational terms. Just again on that, having served two terms as deputy mayor, we are an at-large community. There are no wards here. And the person who, the reason why this worked out is that the person who receives the highest number of votes was the one who reached all ends of this great town of ours, and, and had the highest number of votes of all the councillors. So, so that's how we came up with the idea that whoever had the highest number of votes, that person would be considered by council for the deputy mayor's position. So I will go to councillor Donovan.
Thank you. I think before we start this conversation, I think it's important to note that my support for this has absolutely nothing to do with, you know, deputy mayor Schreier. I think she does a great job, and it's, and it's certainly a, a difficult job, as same as being mayor and councillor, for example. I had some conversations when I was at FCM, as I mentioned during our last meeting, or a couple of meetings back, about the revolving or rotating deputy mayor position. And it sort of sparked quite a bit of an interest in me. I think it's, I think it's a really good idea. I don't think it is overly complicated, nor do I think that if we choose to go that route, that it needs to become overly complicated. I think it allows those who wish to participate, you know, it's not, it's not a forced thing. You don't have to be, become deputy mayor, or put your name forward. But I think it certainly allows some of us to take on more responsibilities and, and sort of build more leadership capabilities through becoming or serving as, as deputy mayor for a year. And it just, I feel like it, it allows more of us to sort of reach out and impact the community a little bit more, in my opinion. So I'm heavily in favor of it. And like I said, I don't think it needs to be, you know, I'm, I'm looking, I just looked or Googled, as we were talking about the last item, and, you know, the, the city of Halifax, or the regional municipality of Halifax does it, Cape Breton, St. John's, Winnipeg, Vancouver, like, they're all big, some of them are bigger cities, some of them are a little bit smaller. But I definitely think it could work for our municipality, and I, I really think it's something we should, we should explore. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Donovan. And I, I will just throw in, just as a little more information, that the city of Halifax has all full-time paid councillors. So just in measuring apples to oranges, or apples to apples, sometimes there are slight differences. Councillor Miller, please.
Thank you, worship. I'm basically indifferent to the thing, but I think that the first term should be, if people do want to split it, the very first term, the two years, first two years should go to the person who has the highest votes, unless they refuse the position. And then people, if they want to become deputy mayor, there's two things. They need to put their name forth, there should be a process, but they need to understand being deputy mayor has a lot more to do than just, just collecting an extra salary. There's a lot more work. So I think the definition of the duties that a deputy mayor does should be well out there. I do not want that job. But, but it's one of those things, I think the top voter should get it. And if people do want to see a rotation, I think those put their names forth. And then, I don't know the process after that, but it's, I'm indifferent. But I think to start off the year, I think you start, the, the top vote gets, the person gets it. And then if nobody else wants it, they're there for the four years. And if somebody else wants it, if, if it's so desired, again, I'm indifferent, then, then you have a process for people to put their name forth. But just to let know, the deputy mayor, kind of like you said, the other people are full-time jobs, it's, it's a full-time job sometimes. So it's, yeah, that's it. Thanks.
And just for clarity, if people put their name forward, so if one or two people put their name forward, it would be like an election or a vote within council or something? Okay. Okay. Councillor Luck, please.
Thank you, worship. Well, I guess I have a few comments. One is, I guess, if we're going to change this, I don't know how I feel about changing it before the next election. I feel like, you know, kind of we went into this, this election kind of cycle with those rules in place. And I think if we do do something like this, I personally think we should wait until the next election, so everyone, you know, putting their name forward for the next election is very clear on what that is versus changing the rules halfway through the game. So that's my one question. Also, I guess, I want to look upriver a little bit and kind of question, is the desire to change out the deputy mayor more of a desire to get more involved? Like I, you know, heard, like, you know, to have more opportunity for leadership, more responsibility, you know, more opportunities to connect with the community? And I'm just wondering, is it the deputy mayor, mayor's position that we want to do? Or is there other ways, as a council, we can ensure that, you know, we as council have more opportunities to interact with the community? I think sometimes it's mayor, and then if it's not mayor, it's deputy mayor, or sometimes both. And as councillors, a lot of times, we don't even get involved with a lot of that stuff until someone else can't make it. And I'm wondering if, you know, people that want to get more involved by looking at other processes, if that would also kind of help meet the need of people wanting to get more involved? It's just, are there, you know, how can we enhance some of the opportunities for councillors that want to take on more responsibility and more leadership roles to do so without perhaps the title? So that's my, my comments.
Thank you. And, and I can speak from my position both as deputy mayor and mayor. When you go in for mayor, it is the mayor that is requested to attend most functions, or meetings, or advocacy groups, that sort of thing with government. That's, that is the responsibility that you take on when you run for mayor. When you are elected deputy mayor, again, that person has all the authority of the mayor. So when you sign up for that, it's, it's a, a role of responsibility that, you know, we take very seriously, and, and I know that council would as well. It, it's, it's not a case of, oh, Mayor Libby is saying, oh, you know, she can't go to this, so she's, she's choosing deputy mayor. That is my responsibility and my duty to respect the position that Deputy Mayor Schreier has, and to make sure that she represents the town. If I'm invited to something by Mayor Riordan in St. John to sit down and speak with some of the ministers, it is the mayor that they want there, or the deputy mayor. So there's never a, a question of, or send so-and-so, or... So when you say that, if, if the mayor and the deputy mayor can't go, then yes, we do have to make a decision to have some representation there. So. Sure?
I guess I was thinking, there are other councils out there that actually share the responsibility, where every councillor kind of has a month, or what have you. So there are opportunities where, you know, doesn't mean the mayor can't go, but is there opportunities to have a councillor go as well? Just so that they have an opportunity to, you know, be out in the community, and, and, you know, meeting the residents and things like that. And I do know other councillors or councils do that. So, you know, they have a rotating, or if it's just, you know, again, I guess I'm just wondering, is it, does someone really want to be deputy mayor? Or is it more the desire to get more involved and looking for ways to do that? So is that kind of the need for, you know, having the title? Or just saying, it would be really nice as council to have more opportunities to get involved, you know? And, and again, not excluding the mayor, but, you know, in conjunction with?
Thank you. And, and again, when an invitation comes out, if it's from the Lieutenant Governor's office, or the MPs, or the premier's office, I don't ask if ten other people, or six other people, or two other people can attend, because otherwise invitations would go to those. So I'm probably not answering this very well. And I know that in St. John, Mayor Riordan has far more to do and to attend than what that, than what I do. And she does break that down to some of her councillors. Some of her councillors also represent people at the federal level, so they attend other activities that both federal and municipal and provincial are, are invited to. So we'll go on to the next person, councillor Olson.
Thank you, worship. I've been a mayor for twelve years, been a deputy mayor for four years. And it's always been my understanding and respected the decision of the people that voted in our municipality. And by that, I mean, I supported the deputy mayor, and actually, I think I moved the deputy mayor into that position when, when it was time to, to identify the deputy mayor. But it's the, the mayor receives the most votes, the mayor-elect has received the most votes of all the people that ran for mayor, mayor's position. The deputy mayor has, has competed, and I don't, competed isn't the, isn't the right word. But the, the deputy mayor offered for the position of a councillor in the town of Quis Pam Sis, and the people of Quis Pam Sis elected her with the most votes. And I've always respected that, and that is why I still feel that the, the deputy mayor should be the, the councillor that has received the most votes from the people that have elected us as councillors. And, you know, moving people back and forth in the position and all that stuff, I think just adds to confusion. So I, I'm, I'm in favor of retaining the existing process.
Thank you councillor Olson. Councillor Bigger?
Thank you, worship. Well, I, I guess, probably if I hadn't sort of brought this up a couple of months ago, it's likely we wouldn't, I, I would bet dollars to donuts, we probably wouldn't even be discussing it as we review this bylaw. So it's probably my fault that we're even talking about it here. But that being said, it's very interesting to hear, you know, a variety of perspectives. And what I hear, generally speaking, are a couple of things. Certainly, I hear that people, and I lend my agreement to this a hundred percent, people are very pleased, we're very fortunate to have a deputy mayor currently serving, who has a great legacy of public service, who has worked very hard on behalf of the, the town and the residents, and we're very fortunate to have her insights. And so any suggestion that I've made to consider a change along this line has nothing to do with that, of course. I, I also hear that people have a lot of respect for the work that's added to the role, as compared to being, let's say, just a councillor, generally speaking. And I think that it's only right that we kind of give that the serious consideration that goes along with it, because there are responsibilities. Councillor Luck makes the point that, you know, certainly there are opportunities that arise from time to time for other councillors to take part in things, whether it's as a proxy on behalf of either yourself, or the deputy mayor who can't be at something, or what have you. But there are lots of opportunities for the council en masse as well, to take part in meet and greet opportunities, or, let's call them your ribbon-cutting opportunities, things like that. I also, with that being said, my motivation to consider this at all comes from only desire for us to adopt best practices and look for optimum effectiveness as a council. And if you go up to a thirty thousand foot level, and you observe more kind of globally across, let's call it the sort of municipal politics industry, maybe that's, that's an odd phrase to coin, maybe, but you mentioned the Halifax example. There are lots of municipalities, more in keeping with the scope and size of our town, where the deputy mayor is a rotating position. So I don't think you can really point at a full-time, I, I appreciate the distinction being made about Halifax, because we, how HRM was mentioned, but there are lots of examples of towns across the country where that kind of role is, exists on a rotating basis. And generally speaking, what I've found in reading about it, and talking with people, as councillor Donovan mentioned at FCM, I've spoken to some people there as well, generally speaking, people have, like, they sort of observe this idea that it adds somehow to broadening the insight and the connection and commitment of the council overall, by virtue of that rotating position. Now, it may not be appropriate for our town, and that's, if we, and of course, I'll go along with whatever the, the rest of the, the gang votes on here, of course, you know? Probably it would be appropriate to consider a change, if any, that would take effect at the beginning of the next council. That, just practically speaking, that's probably true. And even if there was a, a majority vote to agree with this in principle, we probably have to flesh that out, the mechanics of it, and I don't imagine we're going to do that this evening, you know? So in fact, the, really, the, the decision might be, the best decision in favor of making a change might be to study it a little further, bearing in mind that we've got basically until May of twenty twenty-six to make that consideration. So we're not under any pressure to make a decision about this currently, right? I would challenge everybody to consider the value of what is being proposed here, from the perspective of not anybody trying to, you know, grab onto a, a, a position or a role, but rather, a way to kind of spread the insight and educational process of being part of that, of taking on that role, you know? Nobody elects a deputy mayor in our town. We elect councillors and a mayor, that's what we elect. And no deputy mayor is declared. The very first thing I voted for on council was for a deputy mayor. Right? And so we decide as a council, by virtue of an election, who the deputy mayor is going to be. I appreciate the insight, and I don't disagree with what councillor Olson says about how it's a reflection, certainly on a very practical level, it is a reflection, let's say, of the profile that the person running for council who receives the highest number of votes, it's a reflection of their profile, and, and perhaps, but you have to say perhaps. I don't think you can categorically say it's true, that it absolutely means that they are the person most, you know, endearing to the public, or whatever. There are lots of reasons why a person could receive the most number of votes. Campaign strategies could, I mean, play into that. I don't mean to be cynical about it, because I think, again, in our case, we're fortunate to have a deputy mayor who has a great profile and a long history of public service, and that has obviously worked to her credit and her advantage. And, but we vote on who the deputy mayor will be. Now, of course, we, so we have, I just want to be accurate in the way we consider this. We come into our first council session, and we, we observe who received the most votes for councillor, and then we decide, based on the bylaw we have, to offer that person the opportunity to run as the sole candidate to be elected for deputy mayor, and they have the right of refusal, and then from there, we would make another decision. Is it the rule that we would then go to the person with the next highest number of votes? Is that how it works currently? I actually don't know that.
Go ahead, madam.
I think that's right.
If I may, through you, your worship, there's a new regulation from the province that requires municipal councils to include in their procedural bylaw now, the method of which you elect your deputy mayor. Traditionally, council did at their first meeting, they do, that's one of the first orders of business, is to elect the deputy mayor. But it didn't say how in our procedural bylaw. I'm just going to check, actually, to see exactly the wording in our existing one that we've used for, forever, or for forty-some years. However, this new bylaw does have to state the method of which the council elects its deputy mayor. So you do have to put something in there. You can amend this bylaw at any time with three readings, but it would probably be the most appropriate time to do it for your first meeting of, after the next civic election. So you'd want to have it in place before then. See exactly the wording in the first meeting. Go ahead, and I'll look here, and I'll find it for you.
Okay, I will go to Deputy Mayor Schreier. Did you have a something else that you want? Yourself, or the clerk just told me to move on to somebody else until she found that, unless you had something else you wanted to add?
I don't think that what I am getting at really hinges on what our current rule is. All I was asking, as I was going along, I was saying, we currently have this process in place where we, I mean, it's not acclamation, we vote on who becomes the deputy mayor, right? And that's based, but we, that sole candidate, unless they refuse, he or she, is based on who received the most votes for council in the election, right? So we're ahead of the curve if the province is only now demanding that people declare what their process is. We already have a process, right? And so I, all I was saying as an aside was, if the deputy mayor-to-be, based on those vote totals, was not interested, I guess we go to the person after that with the, what's our current rule? It doesn't really matter, but I, all I'm saying is that we, the 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 residents of the town benefit greatly from having our current deputy mayor at that helm, because she's great. But we don't, nobody goes into the into the voting booth, as it were, and votes for a deputy mayor. We we sort of have a process that we've determined, and that we feel reflects, generally, we have felt and adopted, you know, the position that that reflects the best will and and what's best for the people, as Counselor Olson points out. I think that there are other considerations that we would be smart to consider, other other ideas that that could influence that that part of our bylaw that we should consider, and and whether or not they would, if enacted properly, benefit the operation of council, especially as we seem to be having to have a broader and broader and more global scope in terms of how we operate. So I guess I'll leave it at that and say that I continue to be in favor of considering changes, without being able to say exactly what those changes are. I would say that I do agree that practically speaking, it would probably be best to wait until for to kind of, you know, deploy it or whatever until the beginning of the next council session.
Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Acting CAO, Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, your worship, and just for clarity's sake, there is no defined process for electing a deputy mayor in Quispam Sis right now. The tradition, the precedent has been that the counselor who receives the most votes is moved and seconded, and then council elects that person unanimously. But there was nothing preventing Counselor Miller from nominating Counselor Bigger on that first night. If that had been duly moved and seconded and gone to a vote, and if you received four votes, you would have been the deputy mayor. The Local Governance Act changes as requiring us to have a defined process as to how council is going to elect the deputy mayor, starting in twenty twenty-six. So certainly, to your earlier point, I think any changes, regardless of when this procedural bylaw receives third reading, any particular changes, it could be noted that they will take effect after the municipal elections in May of twenty twenty-six, Worship.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
Well, I guess that leaves me to talk. So in nineteen ninety-nine, when I first went on council, it was the rule that whoever received the most votes same process became deputy mayor. Up until two thousand and six, then I moved on, and then again, this time, and I was never deputy mayor, but this time I was successful in getting the most votes to become deputy mayor, and I was very grateful for that. I worked hard at that, I know my files. You have to take into consideration, too, like, you're talking about one person on council, we are a whole council. Our mayor never stops going to things. She has her her finger on the pulse of what's going on, you know, the Regional Facilities Commission, whatever there's going on, and so when she asked me to step in, I, we have long conversations, go over the files, how do I need to be updated? Is there something that's changed? It's not a photo op. That's what I want to make sure that people aren't thinking, well, I want to be able to do that. Well, that's not the case. We're talking about some serious budget issues that may arise, so and you never know who your mayor's going to be. Some mayors will depend very heavily on their deputy mayor, and some mayors don't. And it's it's all the way that they want to work, and everybody has their own working ways. So I always looked at it as, we don't have a ward system, the general public voted, and I would argue the point that people don't go in and say, I'm voting for her for deputy mayor, because they do, or him, they do, with that in their mind. And I would also say that it can become quite complicated with a transition. The mayor has to then re- re-brief. All that that extra work on the mayor's half to order to bring the person up to up to snuff. Of course, this year, this mandate, we have an extra year, we wouldn't normally have that. So I look at the deputy mayor as being the wing woman or the wingman to the mayor. And lots of conversations that have to go be said in confidence, and as we decide on a few things. I guess in closing, in two thousand and twenty-five, is that the election?
Six.
Six, yeah. You know, what I heard from Counselor Luck was an opportunity to do more, to maybe get a, learn more. And and where I've always come back to, in my mind, where that falls is in committee work. Unfortunately, and I've expressed this before, our committees are four-year terms. I think it would be much more favorable. Now, Noah, I think now you're on the fire committee, you're learning something new. Mike moves on to another committee, you're learning something new. It's when we're stuck to four years or five years in this case, you know, there are other opportunities. So where are those opportunities? So in my mind, you can say I'm in conflict of interest, I I think the way it's worked, there's never, there's not going to be in two years or two and a half years, come on over here, I want you to vote for me, and this one over here, I want you to vote for me, you know, there's none of that, it's pretty clean cut. It's the way it is. So that's the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Olson.
Thank you, Worship. I I just wanted to make one point clear that before the end of this discussion, I've never had any problems getting more involved with something. There's always issues out there that could use a little bit of help, and I don't wait to be asked to go and do it, I usually stick my nose in it and get involved. So there's there's never an end to your opportunities to contribute.
Thank you, Counselor Olson, and I believe one visit to the food bank, and you were on the board of directors within the next morning, I guess, so so yes, you you certainly do get involved, and certainly the community appreciates that. So on the election of the deputy mayor, not sure what kind of consensus. Decision of council on the rotating basis, this would be the first meeting of the next council, would need of the next council tenure, I guess, the twenty twenty-six. Deputy Mayor Schreier.
I would put a consensus motion forward that it remains as is, status quo.
Thank you. Counselor Donovan. Consensus to leave it? To leave it?
Excuse me, just a point of order. I thought that we were not to make motions at this point.
Okay, so
Rather just to return to the main motion after our discussion.
Which is, okay, so I have my package here. We did consensus, yes. No, no, no. Is there, Madam Clerk, is that correct, to ask for consensus from everyone? Counselor Olson, so the, so Deputy Mayor said that she would like to see it left as is, and that's what I'm asking for consensus on. Counselor Olson.
It remains as is and and referred to the to the to the council, the next meeting, at our prior to twenty twenty-six.
Counselor Luck. As is. Counselor Bigger.
Well, I think it should stay as is currently, but I think we should make deliberate efforts to study the issue as a possible benefit for our next council.
Thank you. Counselor Miller.
All good.
All good. So item number three, for the limit of debate, the proposed draft reads that no member without permission of council shall speak to the same motion or in reply for a longer term than ten minutes. This is a proposed decrease from the fifteen minutes at present permitted in the current procedural bylaw, number zero three three. Ms. McFarland, our government governance expert, had recommended that this time allotment be reduced further to from three to five minutes. So a decision of council is requested. Counselor Donovan.
Thank you. I will say that I don't think we should move to two to three minutes or three to five. I think ten minutes is fine, and I will even go as far as to say that I will vote against the entire bylaw if we do decide to move it to three to five minutes, because I don't think that's enough. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. Anyone else like to speak to the duration of time for limits on debate? Deputy Mayor Schreier.
I guess the question comes to me is, what is debate? Are we debating something or having this discussion on a strategy or, you know, something like that? So, you know, I'm I'm pretty quick, like, ten minutes is a long time for me to speak, unless I get into something really passionate.
You don't have to take ten minutes.
I I know, you don't have to take ten minutes. So I'm fine with the ten minutes, like, I would take up to three minutes, four minutes, but if somebody else needs those extra minutes, I'm fine with that. Long as that they have the right to speak.
So a debate on the motion, is that on the question, once the motion has been passed? So so once the motion's been moved and seconded, just before the vote? So we're asking, that's what this is referring to, the proposed draft reads that no member without permission of council shall speak to the same motion or in reply for a longer period than ten minutes. This is a proposed decrease from fifteen minutes at present time, and the governance expert said should be three to five, so.
Sorry, I I assumed we had moved it at one point to ten minutes, like, because I I do remember it was fifteen, and then I'd some point, maybe I'm losing it at some point, I don't know, but I could have swore that we had moved it to ten, but again, I I do think ten should stick, I don't think we should move it to three to five, but
How about we ask the clerk, please?
Through you, your worship, just for clarification, currently, the procedural bylaw number thirty-three allows members to speak fifteen minutes on the motion that is proposed. The proposed bylaw has reduced that to ten minutes. That's what's in the under discussion now. Ms. McFarland did recommend, as one of her several recommendations, that that be again reduced from three to five.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments on that? Counselor Bigger.
Well, when you're as brief as I am, you know, certainly shortening the time limit seems like a smart idea. I'm in favor of certainly, fifteen minutes, as it stands currently, seems like a very long time to be allowed to speak on something. Ten minutes seems reasonable. I wish we had an audit of what actually happens versus kind of what we allot to people, because I would, you know, even myself included, Mr. Pot calling kettle black, I I I don't think there's many people who ever hit that ten-minute total, but one thing that, if I could just say that because of the clarification that Deputy Mayor was asking for, you were saying that after a mover and a seconder, it's the amount of time in the discussion that follows that. Now, that sort of infers that that's how we operate currently, and I don't know that that's exactly how we operate currently, where we ask for a motion and a seconder immediately on a on a subject, and then begin debate, as it were. And I just wonder if we can really lay claim to that as what we're as a way to define what debate is, if we're not actually even really doing that all the time. And should we consider that? I I I thought of this when we were having the parliamentary training with Ann, that it seems that the idea of looking for a mover and a seconder as a precursor to debate is partly for efficiency's sake, because, of course, if nobody wants to make a motion, that's that. Or if an amendment to a motion should be introduced, then that would happen if nobody moves, or if there's no seconder or what have you. So if there's nobody to move it, then there's no point in having a debate about it at all, ergo, it would seem. So I I would say that, I'm contending here, that we should be perhaps paying a little more attention to that as a matter of protocol. And with that in mind, everything you say subsequent to that, I think, makes sense about debate is represented by the discussion that follows the seconding of a motion.
And you're absolutely correct. We have done it both ways, because when we've had presentations, when we've had experts from our our staff come up and and give a presentation, that has not precluded us from asking more questions to garner more information before we make our very important decisions. So there have been times when the motion has been made, and and then we have had the discussion, but the time to get the information typically would be before the motion and perhaps even before council, when we read our packages and we say, oh, I I need more information on, you know, why are they widening this road, or why isn't there water here, or whatever. So yes, I agree with you, Counselor Bigger, that we have done it both ways, and we've had reasons why we've done it both ways, but I guess to answer your query is to say which way is the correct way under governance, and I think if I remember, Ann McFarland, our governance professional, said that it can be done both ways, that we can get more information from the experts, and that we, or that we can, if it's a a motion that is fairly clear, we can make that motion and 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 have the first and seconder, and then have shorter discussions on that. And I don't think that is getting, and maybe, Madam Clerk, you can correct me, there was a limitation to that as to what we could ask after the motion was made. Am I not? Am I clear on that?
Well, one of the, one point to note was if it is a a board of twelve or less, then you can do that, because you don't always know what the proposed motion will be. You need to ask questions and come up with what you want to do. Once that, for, once a motion has been put to the floor and seconded, council then owns it, they speak to it, and that's your timeline, your debate, when you have, would have in this bylaw, your proposed ten minutes.
So, thank you. So just to clarify then, and make sure I'm seeing this correctly, it's the it's the amount of time spent discussing a matter subsequent to a seconding of a motion that we're talking about. Questions, when we pose questions to somebody at the lectern or on the screen or what have you, after a presentation, if, you know, somebody comes before us and it's part of the rezoning process, and they come and and, you know, give their apology for their, what they want to, they're apologetic, I should say, for what they want to do, and we have to ask a few questions, because I'm not quite sure that I'm ready to, you know, that I'm in favor of this yet, but maybe they can kind of bring me over to their, see it their way, whatever. That's not, I just want to make sure I understand, if we're gonna, if we're gonna hard code an amount of time in here, in a bylaw, and we're gonna in here, in a bylaw, and we're gonna commit ourselves to abide by that as a matter of, of proficiency and efficiency, I just want to understand, and it's not because it's, it's, and it's, I know it's funny, because I talk a lot, and it's not because I want to know the maximum amount I can talk, it's because, I mean, why the hell do this if we're not gonna abide by it? So, I just want to understand, is that what we're talking about here, is subs, I get the point, small boards, twelve or under, special rules, maybe there are certain situat, it sounds like it's a little from column A and a little from column B, and if that's the case, fine, but I don't know that we can really do anything other than kind of put an approximate target in here, if that's the case.
Okay. I, I'm not quite sure what your question is, but you can, you can do the question part before the motion is moved, and then, when a decision or somebody wants to put forth a motion, and then it has to be seconded before any discussion. Once it's moved and seconded, then it's open to the floor, that's when, yes, that's your debate time.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Counselor Bigger. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, Worship. I have a few comments. Um, one thing I just wanted to, um, kind of point out, based on even something that was said earlier, is the limits of debate also apply to Committee of the Whole, as our procedural bylaw happens right now. I think, um, the clerk had mentioned when we said, well, what's our, you know, when Counselor Bigger was asking, you know, well, what's our limits? I think it was, well, we're deferring to this. So, I guess I'm just bringing that up, that if we're going to have a bylaw and a procedural bylaw to guide us on how we proceed and how we act, it would be nice to have the clarity on that. Just keeping in mind that if that's also gonna reflect Committee of the Whole, or do we need another section? So, that's one thing. Um, also, in the par, parliamentary training, I have my notes here, is, I guess, to just, to build on what was already said, is, and I noticed that in one of the sections in yellow, just before section eighteen, it's been added, is, um, you know, a motion goes to the floor, and there's just, you know, a seconder, and then there's debate, and that's what the ten minutes is referred to, but what doesn't get talked about at all in this procedural bylaw is what was discussed earlier, is the opportunity for questions. And I know, as council, we're, you know, we've been told, well, it's, you know, it's your responsibility to get those answers, but we get our package on Friday night, and council's on Tuesday. You know, a perfect example is even this week, I mean, again, poor staff, there'd be a million, you know, emails flying around, like, we don't have the opportunity sometimes by the time we read the package, because we have a very short turnaround time, so sometimes we have to rely on waiting till council to ask those questions, so we can make an informed decision before we vote. Um, so, when we had the parliamentary training, it did say that there was a section for questions, and then after all the questions were asked, then there'd be a motion, and then a discussion. And I guess I would like to see that reflected in our procedural bylaw, because nowhere does it say that. So, if we have a different mayor in ten years and they read it, are they gonna go, you know, everyone will be retired and enjoying their, you know, life somewhere down, you know, on a, an island, and the new mayor's gonna come in and go, all right, well, we have ten minutes, you know what I mean? Like, it's not clear enough. If this is going to be something that gives direction on how council should function, I think we should have some clarity on that proceeding part.
Through you, your worship, we could, we could put some language around the limit of debate, acknowledging that it doesn't include the questions leading up to the motion, or some kind of language to that effect.
Yeah, and even in the new section that was added, about the main motion, if there was maybe another section just above that, talking, um, oh, I don't know my Roman numeral, numerals, it's X, Y, I, 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 I don't know if that's thirteen, maybe?
It's right there under all those swear words you wrote.
It's like, it's so, it looks like this-
Just go up to the number.
Oh. Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Yeah, seventeen under motions, the very, the very end. It looks like this was added, maybe from our parliamentary training. And I, I guess, just in that section, maybe, um, in terms of just some clarity on, you know, you know, what we had learned in the parliamentary process, that, you know, sometimes it's very straightforward, you put a motion forward, we get a seconder, we vote, and everyone is great, but sometimes we need to ask questions, and I don't think that should be stifled. And I would like to see somewhere in this, there's, there's a, um, one point to, to that effect.
I got you.
Does that make sense?
So, I, we could add, like I said, a section noting, or around this debate part, that, that, that questions are not part of that ten minutes. Is that basically where you're going?
Yeah, I, I guess I'm just looking for, again, at, once everyone moves on, and a new group is looking at this with a fresh set of eyes, and doesn't have you to say, what did we mean by this?
So, they don't ask the same question that was just asked through this council?
Right. They, they're very clear and say, oh, okay, there's a question period. That's not an actual debate. It's question period, then a motion, and then a debate, if it could be clarified somehow, just so that it's more consistent with what our training was.
So, I think one of the other things that the governance specialist, uh, encouraged was that it couldn't be a discussion that went on and on and on, like, it was not a, 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 a point in time where we could just, uh, stay, you know, stay on one topic forever in a day. So, that's why, so, I'm, I'm very clear with the motion, uh, once that is done, with ten minutes, that is very clear. Garnering information from the specialists that come before us, um, again, uh, questions, but probably not opinions, or, um, uh, I guess we have to be careful on, on that as well.
I'm thinking if that could be clarified, because I think you're right, like, sometimes our questions get into discussion. So, if, if it's a question period, without discussion, just getting the information sure, making sure that we're very clear on what we're actually voting for, the motion, the seconder, and then a discussion based on the information that was gathered.
I, through you, your worship, I do recall her saying it's a debate, not a conversation.
Was there anything else, Counselors?
Well, I do have, like, I guess, I'll leave it at that. I do have a few other things. I know that it was only three things that were identified. There was a few other things that I had questions about, but I'll wait until-
Okay, till we finish these three first? Okay, all right. Yes?
Is it possible to take, like, a two-minute break, just like a quick little body break?
Uh, yes, we'll, we'll take a, a motion to, uh, have a two-minute body break, three-minute mo, body break, and, uh, we'll be da, we'll be back in three minutes. Welcome back, everyone. I am now looking for a consensus on reducing the discussion time following a motion from fifteen to ten minutes, and I'm going to go around the table. From fifteen down to ten minutes. So, you're okay, okay? Counselor Bigger? Thank you. So, we do have consensus on that. Thank you. And now, I will ask from- Uh, yes, um, Counselor Luck had a couple of questions. Counselor Luck, are you ready?
So, yeah.
Okay, you're on.
Um, I, first of all, I just, I know that it was just a consensus, um, but I guess if it can be captured when we do our motions and open about just adding in that clarity on the motions that we had talked about as well, that would be great.
I'm sorry, I was-
I'm just, just, I know that we did a consensus on if everyone's okay with ten minutes. I just wanted the other conversation of adding in clarity to be, I guess, built into the motion.
The question and answer period.
So, that was, so, another question, I'm just looking for some, uh, clarity on section fifteen, um, B, I, I. Uh, so, certain communications from the public may be acted upon at the administration level, and as such, at the discretion of the chief administrative officer, these communications can be referred directly to him or her for follow-up action, and members of council can be notified of the communication and action taken for information purposes. Um, I guess my question is, how is that determined if a communication should be going directly to the CIO? Like, is that written anywhere, if, if I could get clarity? That's one question I had.
Thank you, your worship. Um, that would be in consultation with the mayor and the clerk, and a lot of times, we get very simple, I wouldn't call them mundane, but routine matters, if someone says, I want to talk to the mayor and council about whatever, and it's something that's easily resolved at the staff level, um, and there's probably dozens of examples for that, um, and that sort of thing, we'd just say, we got this letter, but we're gonna resolve it, and ultimately, the resident just wants their issue resolved. They don't care if they need to go to the mayor and council, as long as it's taken care of at the administrative level, so that was what we had in mind with that, your worship.
Okay, okay, thank you. And the other question I had was, um, uh, admitting members of the public before council, so a section- Counselor Luck, would you just read the item number?
Oh, sorry, yeah, I was gonna say, admitting members of the public before council, item sixteen. And it's section B, so I noticed that we changed this, um, and I guess I'm concerned about this, because, again, if, if the community wants to come before council, um, we are changing it that, you know, if, if it's an issue with, um, beyond one resident, in the past, we would let at least two residents talk for a total of ten minutes, and now we're saying everyone has a maximum of ten minutes total. So, I guess I'm just wondering if that limits people's right to address council. Like, are we now putting in a barrier? I mean, I don't think it's a huge issue. We don't have a lot of residents coming to council, but I think if they go through the effort, and they're passionate about so, about something, and they request an audience with council, um, I, I don't see any issue saying, you know, if there's more than one resident that wants to talk about something, both of them have up to ten minutes. Like, I mean, we don't want ten people talking for ten minutes, but I'm not quite sure what the rationale was to drop it from, uh, two, um, can appear, um, and speak for ten minutes each, versus now, ten minutes in total.
So, that was one of the, uh, issues that had come up over the past number of years, that if we had successive people coming up and saying the same thing over and over again, um, representation by, by either, uh, emails, letters, phone calls, or people who were present at the meeting, uh, the request would go out to say that if anyone has anything different to add to this discussion, please come forward. If you're supportive of what, um, you know, Mr. Smith has said, um, then we, we, we receive that message. Um, your question, Counselor Luck, that, could you just repeat the question?
Well, I guess, uh, we, so what we took out was, originally, it was written that, um, except when two or more persons appear at the same, uh, for the same subject, they will be limited to two speakers, each limited to no more than ten minutes. So, basically, if we had a room, a full, um, because we say an audience, um, I guess, an audience full of people that are passionate about one subject, we still, in the past, would allow two people to come up and have a maximum of ten minutes to talk each. And now, we're saying, everyone gets ten minutes total, that's it. So, we could have a room full of, you know, fifty people, and we get one person for ten minutes. And I guess I'm just- minutes. And I guess I'm just thinking, again, it's the exception, but because this is how we're going to proceed, I just worry that it's limiting the voice of our residents by cutting it from ten minutes per person up to a maximum of two people to a cumulative ten minutes in total for everybody.
So I just want to make sure I'm clear on this. So you feel that it would be proper to give everyone?
No, I just would like it to stay the same. I don't, I don't want it to be changed. I would prefer as, it to be, stay, stay the same. Like, yeah, just, again, I think just, it doesn't happen very often, and it means it's ten more minutes of our lives, but to let a resident feel like they're being heard, I think it's important that we don't limit that to just a total of ten minutes in total for everybody. So yes, just keep it as is. That's what my question, or my, my request is.
Item sixteen B. Could we have a consensus on that?
Yes. Sorry.
Thank you, your worship. I have no dog in this fight, but I was just wondering about the cumulative nature of that, that if there were two people, ten minutes each, could one speak for two and yield the other eighteen to the other person? Or would each individual be maximum of ten to a maximum of twenty? Very pedantic question, but you understand what I'm saying? It's two people to a maximum of twenty, right? That's what you're saying, we should keep it at?
No.
Ten minutes each, two for ten minutes?
Yeah, so, yeah, the way, the way it's, yeah, the way it's written is that...
And that's how you wanted to keep it?
I just want to keep it as the originally was written, which was ten minutes in total for two people. So twenty minutes in total.
So I guess my question to the clerk is, now, is the process, if two people show up, one speaks for two, can they yield their eight to the other person to give them eighteen? I would say no to that, but that's probably, we want to clarify that as well.
Okay, no, that's, that's fine.
I don't believe that's the spirit of what's written, but I don't, but I don't think you can technically say that, you know, that that's the way it is.
Point of, point of privilege, can someone shut the blinds? Is there a blind to shut for that beautiful?
There's a blind.
Oh, okay, there's not a second blind? Okay. I thought there was a thicker one that we could pull. It's a beautiful sausage.
Yes. That state ten minutes per person, maximum. So we'll take out the other, and keeping in mind, public hearing.
Yeah.
That's a legislative public hearing.
Yeah, yeah.
Where they can, yes, five minutes.
So, on a consensus basis, Counselor Miller's good.
I would say neither of those.
Okay. And Counselor Thompson? You're okay? Consensus. Did anyone have anything else? Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, your worship. The, the only thing I have is, is the same thing I voted against last time, is, we say, we took out the words unless otherwise determined by the majority of council, the council meetings start at six. I've been fairly lucky, so...
Is there a number to?
Oh, yes, number eight. Eight A.
Eight A, thank you.
Yeah. And it's just a procedural thing, because I'm lucky lately, I've been working at home, and I've, I've been able to manage my time better than normal. But I go through times where I'm working in Eastern Standard Time, I'm lucky I can make it to, to cow when I do, because I live five minutes away. But for anybody joining and trying to be a counselor, if you work in town, you'll be lucky to get home by five thirty. So then that has a whole different issue, you're missing cow all the time, so I voted no for the six o'clock in the first place, and we're lucky that most people can get here at six. But if you have people that are working full-time and in town, it's, it's really tough. So that's the only way, I'm, I'm for everything else, and I'll say it in public, but I'm against the mandatory six o'clock start, is I think that should be, I think the word should be sta, still in there, majority of council can change that. Because if people were working in town, five, five o'clock cow? No way. But that's just...
Can I just respond to that, Counselor Miller? When I started back in 2011, there was mandatory committee of the whole, every meeting, at four thirty, and council always showed up. Well, it was a case that when we run for council, we understand what the time constraints are, and what the, what our time, you know, requirements are and so forth. And, and same with when I was on the fireboard, I knew what my times were there, police board, I know that those, those meetings start at three o'clock in the afternoon. And I, I think there's, I'm still right on that, Counselor Luck. So I, I think that's something, again, that we have to look at very seriously, because I know that some businesses certainly encourage their employees to be a part of boards of directors, and this, this is a, a board that, that we belong to. So I certainly preferred having it start at six and going no later than ten, rather than starting at seven and going, what, did we go one night till quarter after twelve or something? I don't know.
But, but like I said, I'm lucky, I can...
Go ahead.
I'm lucky, I can, I can make most cows, but if somebody's working in town, it's, it's nice to say that, but also, if you have a different job, if you're a teacher, you're off at three thirty, or, or two thirty, depending which, where you're working. But if you're working downtown nine to five, or you're working at the call center, it's very hard to be a counselor. That's all I'm saying, that you're taking out people to be counsel, because if they apply, say, well, you, you applied for the job, you knew you had to be here at five o'clock. So five o'clock means you got to leave somewhere at four thirty or quarter after four. That, it's just, I had the same comment before, but it's, I'll have the same one in open.
And, and again, it's a discussion to have with an employer, to say, I'm, you know, I'm not only representing my residents, but I'm representing our business. This is the person that I am, and this is what I bring to my community. So I think, you know, certainly, great discussion, but, but I feel that when, because I know in St. John, counselors are there, I believe, at four o'clock, I, I think, they, and most of them are, will, you know, they're, they're employed people as well, so that just happens to be when, when the time starts. Counselor Donovan, please.
Thank you. I, I don't know what the process is, I don't know who can, I assume it must be you that can call for consensus. But it's clear, I do share the same point of view as Counselor Miller, and I do think that it's something that, you know, if it comes down to taking it out or leaving it in, I think that should be a consensus item that we should decide on right now, whether we keep that line item that's scratched out, where it says, "Unless otherwise determined by a majority vote," or keep, like, you know, take it out. I think that's something we should decide right now.
If, if I may, through you, your worship, the only reason it was struck out was in another part of the bylaw, any of these rules can be suspended by a two-third majority vote of council. So it is a higher number to change the meeting, but it does still open it up, so council could, council could still change the start date. It was felt it was redundant having it there too, but it could stay in as well. It's a, it's a majority here, the suspension of rules is a two-third majority.
So two-thirds, which would be?
Six.
Six, so six out of seven, which means only...
Six out of...
Six out of eight, I guess.
Yeah, we count eight for, sorry. But that's to start at the meeting, though, that the public has come to know, yeah.
I still disagree.
So you want it to be in?
I would like to have majority.
That was the only reason it was removed, though, so we can put it back, leave it there.
Well, it's not up to me, it's up to...
But did you want a consensus discussion on this?
I would like, I would like to keep it in. The, unless otherwise determined by a majority, the council, the meetings are at six.
Do I just speak to that before you do that?
Sure. Counselor Luck?
Thank you, I just, I wanted to speak to that, because I, I think Counselor Miller brings up a really good point, because again, we've all agreed at six. But, you know, these are procedural bylaws that we don't change every day, so the next council, they might determine by majority vote, which would only be four, that because board new counselors have to make it to St. John, you know, at that point, they might say, you know what, let's change it back. So it gives a bit more flexibility, so I just wanted to kind of put that out there, that we're not changing it tomorrow, it's just that it gives up wiggle room, so as councils' need changes, or if someone gets a new job and they say, you know what, I can't now make it to half the meetings, you know, so anyway, I'm in favor of it, but I just wanted, hopefully, other counselors to see that he's, I don't think Counselor Miller is requesting we change the time, it's just to give that flexibility, just by majority, not two-thirds, the opportunity to meet the needs of council as needed.
Thanks. So the suspension of procedural rules, notwithstanding the foregoing provisions of this bylaw, may be suspended by a two-thirds majority vote of the whole council, when such suspension is not contrary to any provincial act or regulation. So, yeah, I will go around and ask, so, six o'clock, Counselor Miller?
No, well, I'm okay with it for now, I would just keep, keep the wording, unless determined by a majority.
Leave the, leave the majority...
Leave everything there.
Yeah, that's all, yeah, I'm, six o'clock, now we're there, yeah. But I was just saying, for the next council, if a majority wants to change it, it doesn't have to be two-thirds, it's just majority.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have anything further on the bylaws?
Do you want a consensus on that? Or are you just...
Were you?
I was just...
I, I, yes, I, I just, so consensus, yes, 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 yes and yes. Yes, we do have consensus on that. Yes, yeah, we have six, yeah. Counselor Donovan?
Thank, thank you. And this is just, I guess, fairly insignificant, but...
No, we're, we're doing a consensus on this one.
I did do the consent, did I not? Yes, okay. Am I free to?
Wait, wait for the rest of us.
Okay. Did we, did we do consensus yet?
Yes.
You weren't paying attention.
So at the six o'clock timing, Beth?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so, so we've done consensus on that, so Counselor Donovan, you wanted to speak to something on the procedural bylaws?
Yeah.
Okay, you go ahead.
Thank you. It's seventeen B, the motions.
Seventeen D.
B, as in Bob.
Page fifteen, I remember that.
Correct. Seventeen B.
I have seventeen B?
Yeah. It says, "And if a member wishes to withdraw a motion, they must ask for unanimous permission of council. If there's no agreement, a vote is taken." Just in my personal opinion, we're, we're talking a lot about efficiencies, and how we can get things done faster, and, and again, more efficient. And I think, you know, there's been plenty of times that I personally have, have removed my motions, of course, with the permission of, of my, a secretary of that motion, and it's worked out fine. I don't personally believe that we need to make it so that the entire council now has to vote, and whether or not I can remove my own motion. I, I understand that at the, when we did the procedural training...
Anne McFarland.
Anne McFarland, thank you, sorry. I, I understand, when, when we did the training, Mrs. McFarland said that, you know, once a motion goes to the table, it effectively becomes, you know, property of the council, and I, and I get that, understand it, I respect it. But I think, you know, what we have right now is working, I don't think it should be changed. And I think it's efficient enough, instead of having to go around the council and ask if somebody is, so-and-so is okay with me removing my own motion. That's my own opinion, and I'm looking forward to discussion on that.
Thank you, Counselor Donovan. And again, when she highlighted that, it was because it was also in accordance with Robert's rules at the time, so, and she's trying to align us with proper governance with Robert's rules. So discussion on that. Counselor Bigger?
Thank you, yeah, I think this, I had read that, and I was curious about this one as well, but I think the spirit of what's being proposed here is to underline the reality that, and I mean, I'm fine with whatever we decide as a group to do, but I think the spirit of it is to underline the reality that once a motion has been put out there on the table, it, it isn't really the, the property, so to speak, of the person who has pushed it out there. Rather, it does belong to council to either be debated or to be withdrawn by sort of unanimous consent. And I also think that it infers that someone should be doubly certain before they move on anything to, like, to not be frivolous about making motions. Because, you know, once it's out there, you can't just sort of grab it and pull it back by virtue of what this is suggesting, but rather, it does require a sort of a quasi little formal process to be rescinded. I mean, that being said, I take Counselor Donovan's point that what we have is, seems to work okay, and if we didn't change to this, I could certainly live with that. But I, that's what comes to mind to me, is kind of the raison d'etre for that, you know? As you point out, Mayor, kind of in, lining up more closely with Robert's rules.
Yes, and I think that's what Ms. McFarland was trying to align us with, was to say, rather than having our own basis and, you know, kind of hokey, not hokey, but being able to make a motion and then withdraw it, that, you know, it belongs to all of council, and once that motion is on the table, it, it should have a vote on it, in my opinion. And I, I would agree with her, I think that we should be aligning ourselves with Robert's rules. That is the guiding principle that, that all councils follow across Canada. Counselor Bigger?
Thank you. I also just, it just comes to mind, but I also think that as a matter of public record, and not to put people on the hook for the things that they've made motions on, but I think it also, it, it marries that person a little more, you know, intimately with the motion that they're making, because they can't, nobody can just willy-nilly decide, oh, I rescind that. It now has to be determined by council once it's been put out. So again, I think it just bold faces kind of the, the sober nature of making a motion, generally speaking, large board or small board or what have you. So I, I actually am fine with making the change personally, but I, notwithstanding what Counselor Donovan has said, I appreciate where he's coming from.
Counselor Luck?
Thank you, your worship. One thing that I don't see here, and under perhaps motions, I'm just wondering, I guess, through, through you to the clerk, is anything around amending motions? Because, I mean, we do that fairly, you know, informally, but we say, like, can we add an amendment, or can we amend that motion, and then we go back to the original mover? So I guess, in this kind of understanding, once the motion's on the floor, it belongs to all of council? Should we have something in here talking about amending motions? Because right now, we just go back to the mover and the second, or say, is that okay? And can we add this, or is this, whereas technically, if we're going to change that, we should be then saying, is it all, is it okay to all of council, because all of council owns the motion? Oh, is that, is that in there somewhere?
It is in there, yeah.
Okay. Page seventeen.
Item eleven?
Eleven?
Amend.
Uh, page seventeen, item eleven?
Oh, eleven, it's not page seventeen, I don't think.
X one. So it says, amend, "Applied to main motion or previous amendment must not change the intent of the pending motion."
I, I don't know where you're going.
Yeah, sorry.
Okay.
What, seventeen? Page seventeen?
I thought you said item one.
Page seventeen, that's where we're going.
It's not there.
So, it's item seventeen, motions?
No, okay, under motions, okay.
On page seventeen, sorry.
Okay.
It's both, it's item seventeen and...
Roman numeral, number eleven.
Roman numeral, number eleven. Where's, where's?
So, okay, eleven?
So your amendment must not change the intent of the pending motion?
Okay.
But to make it more acceptable, it is debatable if applied to a debatable motion.
Okay.
Right.
Page seventeen.
With that as a point, we, we have this...
Xi, number eleven, roman numeral, eleven.
Right. Okay.
I guess it's nineteen on the...
Page, nineteen on the little pages, Beth.
How are we doing?
So can we go back to the consensus on Counselor Donovan's question seventeen B?
Your worship?
Yeah.
Could I just?
Counselor Bigger?
Just one quick thing. Again, this, Counselor Luck's point about the, the process, as it were, that we follow currently, about going back to that original counselor who has made a motion, saying, are you, is that acceptable to you to amend this, or what have you? That again, is, is, it kind of, I think that runs up in conflict against what we've just been talking about, in, insofar as, once a motion is on the table, it's not really the, the property, for lack of a better term, of the person who made the motion. So an amendment subsequent to a motion that's been made, I, I don't believe, according to Roberts, relies on us going back in some folksy fashion to the person who made the motion, but rather, an introduction of an amendment can come from anybody, based on the discussion that happens. And we don't need to seek the permission of the original mover, of the original motion, if you see what I mean. And so, that's not, strictly speaking, laid out here, but I just think that, you know, we, it, I think it serves us well to kind of bear that in mind as a matter of process.
Thank you for pointing that out, Counselor Bigger. So on seventeen B motions, I'm looking for a consensus. And what Counselor Donovan had asked was to remove the strike? And what Counselor Donovan had asked was to remove the strike?
The green. It was the, the motion.
So you want that removed, you want it to remain as it was previously? Okay, so Counselor Donovan would like that to remain as it was. We, because of what our, um, expert has told us, this aligns with Roberts' rules to have that struck from our procedural bylaw. Counselor Donovan is asking to remove the strike. Counselor Thompson? Leave it, uh, uh, keep the strike. Counselor Olson?
And remove the green.
And remove the green, yes.
Keep the green.
No, no, remove the strike and, and remove the green. Did I say keep the greens or, I meant remove the green? That was, if that's what, that's what, no, Counselor Donovan is asking to do.
No, he's asking for it to be the same as it was.
Okay, Counselor Donovan, go ahead.
Sorry, I guess I should say it, but, um, it would be to, um, remove the green and keep the, the part that's struck through.
So he wants to keep what is in, uh, struck in black, and he wants to remove the green. Counselor Thompson is saying she'd like to keep it.
Keep the green.
Keep the. Keep it as presented here on page fifteen. Counselor Olson, you want to keep it as presented here?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Luck, you want to keep it as presented here? Are you sure? I, I'm not trying to pressure anyone, I just wanted to have clarity. Okay, Counselor? Okay, Counselor Miller?
Well, it's already four. Indiana, it's keep it like it is, because, yeah.
Okay, that's consensus, all right. Did anyone else have anything further? Council members, we can have a motion now to go back into regular session. Moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Biggar on the question. Please vote now. Beth voted, there you go. Could I have a motion, please, to implement these consensus into the bylaw to be brought back at the next open meeting? Counselor Miller? Moved by Counselor Miller, seconded by Counselor Donovan on the question. Counselor Olson, did you have a question, just, oh, sorry, thank you, that's fine. On the question, please vote now.
Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, she's good. Motion carried, six to zero. And we will let the record show that, um, Counselor, Deputy Mayor Scire left at seven fifteen this evening. Item number eleven A, new business, tender number zero two three dash eight two one, Quizpamstis Town Hall upgrades exterior envelope. Staff report from the Director of Community Services. You had that in your package. Counselor Olson?
Yes, your worship, I'd like to move that council award tender twenty-three dash eight two one to the bidders. Eclipse construction in the amount of four hundred eighty-three thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars and six cents, pre-HST, for the roofing and siding portion of this project, and to controls and equipment in the amount of fifty-nine thousand one hundred and sixty-one dollars, pre-HST, for the HVAC portion of the project. The additional amount of one hundred and fifteen thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars and thirty-one cents in funding required to come from surplus or general capital reserves.
It's been moved by Counselor Olson. Seconded by. Do we have a second, or Counselor Biggar on the question? Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, your worship. Um, the, the thing that I'm concerned with is, this is the first major item we're getting in April. This one's already a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars over budget. We had a garage that's coming in, we got a whole bunch of other things, so. In, in my view, I think it's either two things, we reject it, or if we're going to do this, we find the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from existing budget. Because we had a large discussion on reserves, and what we needed to do, and how much reserves we needed to have, and this has taken a big kick out of it right away. And this is the first one we've got. We haven't got all of our trucks in, we haven't got all of our, um, everything else that we got on there. Because, I mean, we have a lot of machinery on this year's budget, we've got the service garage to, to look at, which was kind of the same process. So, if this really, really needs to get done this year, um, and we have to go through it, I would vote yes for this, but, but the money has to be found from existing budget.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. Any other comments on the item? So it's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Biggar. Counselor Olson, please.
Yes, your worship, the only question I have is that I don't think we have, uh, we don't have the expertise in council attending tonight's meeting to, uh, reference where this money would be reduced from other budgeted items. I don't know if the, if the treasurer has any suggestions on that, or, I'm thinking, I'm thinking of our Director of Engineering. You know, that's quite a chunk of money to come out of, uh, of pre-approved items, but, you know, I thought that this is, this is the type of thing that we have reserves for.
No, uh, so it has been moved by Counselor Olson, it's been seconded by Counselor Biggar on the question. Counselor Biggar.
Thank you, your worship. Well, I, I think there's, I think there's, uh, a lot of good horse sense in what is being said, both by Counselor Miller and by Counselor Olson. I mean, if there is, I, I agree that, I, I think we're a little, I don't know that we quite have the, the requisite, uh, executive staff in the bullpen here tonight to be able to kind of speak, uh, to where we would look to find, you know, those funds. And everybody is, I'm sure, reticent to want to go kind of pry open the sealed up budget, you know, and start looking for pennies in the cushions. However, uh, there is, it, I mean, it, depending on the urgent nature of this, uh, I mean, perhaps there's some room for us to, uh, if the only thing we're missing, to get insight about whether or not it's practical to, to, uh, follow with what Counselor Miller's suggesting. If the only thing we're missing is the people here for that, then why don't we defer this? And perhaps I would introduce a motion to defer, and, and then we, until next meeting, and we can, uh, have this reviewed by the requisite staff. It may be that this is the proper course of action, and let's find that out. I don't know from whence, uh, those funds would come, and I, I tend to agree, being, uh, a new guy on the horseshoe here, that, like Counselor Olson says, I, it seems like this is kind of what reserves is for, but then again, we've only got so much in there, and it's only April, as has been said. So, is that not a, a realistic option to consider, to defer?
I'm going to go to the town treasurer first, but we do have a motion on the table. Uh, Ms. Brandon, please.
Uh, three year, worship. Um, yes, so in essence, this is what reserves are intended for. As I was going through this procurement and looking at this, and already, again, just kind of coming back and seeing, we're already over a hundred and fifteen thousand on one project. I did ask the question about where we were, with the other vehicles, the other items that we have kind of going on. But again, until we get the procurement coming through, we don't kind of necessarily have that, that, those ideas. But we, we always look to, within our budget, there's fixed items. So there's items that, you know, we need to pay fire, we need to pay police, we need to play, you know, fund a regional service, we have, you know, salary. There's not a lot of wiggle room, like, within some of those items, but again, as we're going through this, I'm tracking all of these motions with anything that's now coming to reserve, and hope to come back as we get a few more tenders in to say, you know, here's where we're at right now, based on the tenders that we've received so far, um, and this is what, you know, we're estimating to come from reserve. We will only pull it from reserve if we don't have any surplus at the end of the year. We only ever just take what we actually need to cover off those expenditures. But this is critical work in, in discussion with reviewing the procurement. This is, these are items, like, this building needs to be able to be, you know, safe and, and efficient, and not falling down around us. So, again, we do use our consultants to provide us the information as we're building our budgets. Again, remembering our budget already started back almost eight months ago, right? So things are still changing, we are still seeing inflation. I know that, you know, in the media, it says, like, inflation's lowering, but we are still seeing significant increases in almost every item that we're, we're, we're dealing with. So, again, we will always look to save where we can. That is why we do have reserves, is, is so that we can continue on and do the best work that we can. And again, we don't want this building to, to, you know, the Eves, the HVAC electrical, we don't want that to, to stop working for us, so.
Thank you, Ms. Brandon. I'm going to go to Mr. Kennedy, please.
Yeah, thank you, your worship, just to reinforce the treasurer's comments, this is definitely under the need and want, not a want, um, for the municipality. The building's twenty years old, uh, the roofing work needs to be done, and, um, your worship, you're in here quite a bit during the day, and you see people that are in various layers, trying to maintain warmth, even as these spring days are upon us, so it's, uh, it's definitely something that is required. And to the treasurer's point as well, about, you know, going over this, and the bids that we received, and as council's aware, the bids, uh, two bids are way off, um, one another. So, uh, this is certainly the best deal, and unfortunately, it is, uh, over budget, but, um, we're hoping that council will, uh, approve this and allow us to move forward with this, uh, very important work. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. Counselor Miller, please.
Thank you, worship, just to follow up, I, I do agree, it has to get done, I have no, no, no qualms on that. I, I just think back to our budget process, where at one point, um, the Director of Engineering was going to take a truck out, which was worth a hundred grand, and then somebody said they could, all of a sudden, take a hundred thousand dollars off the salt shed, and so, this is a big number, so to me, that's one truck. So, and that's, that's my only thing, is we, we got to get it done, I, I'm okay with that, but I just want to be cognizant of the fact that we can't always dip into reserves. We've been doing this for the last few years, sometime it's in your house, you got to start cutting something else back, and that's, so, that, that was my only comment is, and there's nobody here to make that decision, but to me, the, the decision, if, to me, would be, and find it from your current budget. But if everybody doesn't vote that way, that's fine, that's, but I do, I do know it has to get done, that's, I'm a hundred percent clear with that.
Thank you, Counselor Miller. Uh, Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, your worship, I'm in agreement with Counselor Miller, I mean, I agree that it needs to get done, but I guess, I'm just wondering, you know, this is a need to have. Are there some nicer to haves that we budgeted for that potentially? So again, just working out the budget so it's, you know, the numbers still work out. So I'm not sure if, you know, it's feasible for us to put this vote on to the next agenda, when we have the actual intel in the room that can actually give us the information that we need to make an informed decision. I think we, well, I mean, I'm assuming that most of us in our agreement that it's an important spend, it's really just the second part of the motion, where the funds are coming from.
Thank you for that information, and again, the, when the budget is set, uh, we do our best to remain tight to the parameters of that budget. And, uh, we know that when we go back last year, and, uh, we didn't get any of our roads done, and that is my fear, is that if we continue to cut back from the existing budgets that we have and take things away, it's, uh, we're going to fall into some disarray at some point. I don't disagree with you that it's a large sum of money, but I full-heartedly believe that this work has to be done, and I know you do as well. But I, I really do dislike to see us cut back on, uh, very important work that we have already budgeted for. Counselor Olson, please.
Thank you, your worship, I'm just wondering if, uh, if our Director of Engineering is even going to be here at the next meeting. And, uh, I don't see why we can't approve this tonight, and, uh, when he does, come back to, uh, to work. That, uh, if, if, uh, reviewing the, uh, the reserves, if we have to cut something out of a budget at that time, transfer that, but, part of the budget to the reserves.
Thank you. The Director of Engineering is, certainly, you're, you're looking at where to cut back, but this file belongs to the Director of Community Services. Director, we're looking at the, uh, the building and the HVAC and so forth, and it was brought up that that's a lot of money, and that perhaps we should be cutting back on existing, uh, costs that we've already allocated with this budget. And, uh, I, I think you heard what I just said, that when we cut back on one thing, then that is going to get delayed. This is essential, you know, we've all seen the outside, we've all seen the tiles curling in the roof, we've seen the fascia board with the holes in it that, uh, uh, allow varmints to get in and so forth, so, uh, I'll let you speak to that. Yes, and we do have a motion on the table.
Okay, thank you, your worship. I would just reiter, really, uh, reiterate what you've said, it doesn't take long to realize how, just, in disrepair, this building is. If you walk outside after a windstorm, you're going to see the shingles, and the flower beds, um, that's happened several times, um, over the course of the winter and spring. The building is twenty-two years old. From an asset management perspective, if we don't do this now, it will cost us more later. We budgeted based on the recommendation of, from the consultant, and actually increased that by over ten percent, because, like, we get our quotes in, uh, early fall, in September, so we realized by the time our budget passes, and we put it out to, to tender, we'll go get quotes, that, um, that those items will most likely increase, so we try to estimate that, um, that happening. And I know that everyone's also aware of what our prices have been like, uh, with COVID or what have you, and even finding companies to give us a quote for a budget, um, is hard. There, as you've mentioned, it was, well, earlier, finding staffing is hard, so, um, what we've done in this case, upon the recommendation of the consultant, and also for some cost savings, is to separate the HVAC, um, quotes from the tender, uh, for the, for the roof and for the siding. And, uh, again, the, um, HVAC system is at the end of life. It's, it's usually, uh, these sixteen years or so for an HVAC system, we're at twenty-two, it's original as well. Um, there's, with that project, um, we separated them again for cost savings, we're managing the project in-house. Um, as we've, we've done with our last projects for several years, in parks, facilities, and, and arenas and pools, our, our, our managers are, are managing those capital projects on top of the regular works, and that's not easy. But it gets us cost savings, and, uh, we keep very tight, um, strings on the budget. So, um, the other point I'd like to make is on the HVAC, in that, um, the system is an air conditioning system with an electric baseboard heating. So our new system will be an H, uh, heat pump, so there will be cost savings, hopefully, with that, as well as it will be better for the environment. So, I really feel, uh, and I know this is unfortunate with the pricing that it came in so high, we will obviously continue to look for grants as we do every year, and, and if we're not successful in this one, we'll be successful on another one, and we're going to keep trying, um, to continue to get the grants for the projects that we have. But I think from an asset management perspective, um, and then, you know, the, uh, from the heat pump system and energy savings, I think it would be wise to move on these two items now, and if you delay it, that, that's council's choosing, I, I think you'll see the cost even higher next year.
Thank you, Ms. Burton-Dixon. Counselor Luck, please.
Thank you, worship. Through you to the Director of Community Services. I know that you joined us after our discussion, so I think the majority feels that this is something that needs to get done. It's so we're not questioning the need. We, I guess our question was, where can the money come from? So I guess I'm looking to you in terms of, instead of it taking, coming from reserves, is there something else that is a nice to have, you know, that, again, we would like to do, but could we push that off to find the funds for this needed, you know, renovation and maintenance for now? I guess that, that was kind of the question that we had, is, you know, instead of taking it to reserves this early, is there something else in our budget that we could say, okay, we're going to wait on that, because this is more important?
Sorry? Go ahead, Director.
Your worship, I think most things we put forward are, are obviously very carefully thought out and, and recommended through the budget process. Our department in particular was asked to eliminate a hundred thousand dollars from our budget, which we did. And we changed the scope of a couple of projects. I can't not, off the top of my head, think of anything that I would recommend to, as a nice to have. I think we look at, you know, or we plan our budgets, we're taxpayers too, we plan our budgets, we want to do the best for our community. And we really are, have been focusing on, last several years, on asset management. And I just, moving forward, we're looking to take care of these assets and make sure that they last, you know, a long time. So I really, I, I can't speak to that right now, off the top of my head, what would be a nice to have, because I honestly can't, can't think of any.
Thank you. On the question. It's been moved by Counselor Olson, seconded by Counselor Bigger. Please, please vote now.
Counselor Thompson?
Yes. Counselor Luck? Motion carried four-two. The inay counselors were Counselor Luck and Counselor Miller, with yeas from Counselor Bigger, Counselor Thompson, Counselor Olson, and Counselor Donovan. And item number twelve, reports. We will move on from reports. Item number thirteen. Counselor Miller?
Thank you, worship. I guess I'll be interested to see in reports twelve C, where Giselle Gauguin is now the appointed chair of the newly established governance of commissioners, or, yeah, local municipal, I guess. I'll be interested to see what that group does, because also when I read the, the announcement, that there's going to be no less than four more people joining her very soon. So I'm wondering what these five or six people are going to do that's going to make this more efficient, because these are brand-new positions. So it's just my rant on things. Could be a great position, great job. I just would like to know what these five or six people will do, and I guess we'll, we'll see in the future. Thanks.
And that, that's a question that many of us have asked, and as Chair of the Regional Services Commission, I saw it again as another layer of governance, that, that hopefully we will find out what the direction will be to those people, and then down to us. Thank you, Counselor Olson.
Where are we at in the agenda?
We are, sorry. We're on item number thirteen. We no longer have to receive and file reports, just letting those go. Business arising from committee of the whole, the second reading.
Business arising from committee of the whole.
No reading, nothing from that? Okay.
I'm waiting for adjournment.
All right, go ahead.
Adjourn, please.
It's been moved by Counselor Olson, that the meeting has been adjourned.
Thank you, worship.
Seconded by Counselor Thompson. On the question, please vote now. Yes, she, she seconded. Motion carried? Motion carried six-zero. Thank you. Have a good night, everybody. Safe travels home.